Total project, new buildings and structures of twenty, twenty-three, five, let's just say, million. So total construction, twenty, fifty-three million dollars, basically. And then we had one alternate that was asked for, which is some camping RV site, pull-in, pull-out kind of spaces down at the, at the fairgrounds. And a lot of that was site involved. But anyway, that, that threw another six-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand into that for a total of fifty-three million eight hundred. These are big numbers. I put some contingencies to them. I haven't put any escalation cost in there. This was done last year, so, you know, we haven't changed a whole lot since then. But if you're projecting further out, you would have to obviously put some modifiers in there for escalation. You're not going to be able to read all this, but this is what I was referring to, is if you wanted to get down into the weeds, we've got more of these in the full report. This PowerPoint's only fifteen pages out of a, about a hundred-page document. But a lot of, of estimates going on here. Costs now. I will stop at this one right here, because I know water was a big, big issue. And we went back and forth quite a few times with the county of Amherst mainly, on will there be enough water on the site? So I'll just go ahead and, and hit it right here, because well systems down here in the bottom is roughly four, four-point-two million. It sounds like a big number for well systems, but that's not just wells. That's storage, that's distribution, treatment, you know, there's a lot more things going on here, because you're talking about a site that's, you know, three-hundred acres with up to, you know, two-thousand people at a time on-site. So a lot of toilets, a lot of process water, depending on if you're doing meat processing, things like that. You've got a lot of livestock. All these things add up. So Hurt and Profit did a very good job of calculating that gallons per day. And I'm gonna pull the number. I think it was twenty-eight thousand gallons per day was required. And some of that'll be in storage, because you've got fire suppression, which would be a, a tank for fire suppression, because all these buildings would have to, most of these buildings would have to have a sprinkler system in there. So anyway, that, that's kind of that part of it with the water. We couldn't determine how much water you're gonna get off that site. You know, you'd have to be, you know, a betting man to try to bet on that. But for calculation purposes, we basically figured three wells, like three-hundred feet deep. Talked to fall well, well drilling, and they said, you know, on a good day, you may be able to find, you know, somewhere around seven gallons per minute. That's maybe a stretch. You know, I know most residential wells are what, maybe three, four gallons per minute? But anyway, you know, the calculation was set up for if it was being used. So you've got time when things can be pumped and stored on off-hours. So, you know, getting the wells in there, we feel like you surely will be able to get enough water for the site. But also put in the executive summary that you ought to make it contingent upon purchasing the property. You know, go in and do your, you know, well drilling, do a drawdown test on your wells that are there. There's two wells, one at the Old House site, and then one down near the pond. And of course, this was residential and livestock. So, you know, what the quality of the water is, how many gallons per minute you're gonna get, all that would be a, a test that you wouldn't want to take on unless you were really serious about the site. And then the other would be drilling more wells and seeing what you actually get. Existing conditions, you know, got some, you know, nice features throughout the site. And this is the pond down here on the, on the south end of the site, closer to twenty-nine. You can actually see twenty-nine behind it. You know, some old farm structures, farm pieces here that, this is a well casing or well pit near the farmhouse. Got a cell tower on the site, and then a well casing down here at the south end of the site, near the pond. As far as access to the site, we don't see any problems with that. We didn't go as far as a traffic study or anything exhaustive like that. Again, the feasibility study, Hurt and Profit looked at two-hundred-foot lengths for taper, you know, load-in, load-out kind of situation here. So no big, no big news there. Pretty typical stuff. These are just some elevations of the different buildings. And in the full report, there's more elevations and, and drawings of cabins and, and some of the other buildings. Again, these are pre-engineered buildings that are metal and high-energy use. So, you know, you've got to figure all that into the program. So just to touch on the utilities a little bit more, water, we've talked about, but, but sewer, you'd have to have a treatment plant to take care of that. The fields look like they would be fine. You know, it's just a matter of how long your drainage fields would have to be. And all that, you would have to get tested, you know, in the next level of design to, to come up with that. So, but you will end up with some type of pretreatment in that. There is no natural gas on the site that was talked about with the, the gas company that serves the region, and so you would have to do propane for gas. Electric, you've got some single-phase coming through the site. There'd have to be some modifications to the electrical, of course, with, you know, higher electrical use. Let's see, telecom that's available, and that would be something that you would bring into the site from your local telecom or internet service provider, rather. So I think that's kind of, as fast as I could go. I used twenty minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
Want to go into Chris or ask questions before we go into Chris? Want to ask questions?
Yeah, anybody have any questions on our side?
Either side.
Either side, before we move on to Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So just to get this, some facts straight, water is still an issue on the site. I know you said there's a, we'd have to drill the wells to see whether or not it would even have the ability to have that amount of water that was needed for it. Is that correct?
Right, right.
And then also the, I guess, were you saying perk test would be done and a, a pretreatment would have to take place with that?
Correct. Your, your perk test, your soils would be dependent upon how much treatment you would have to install. But we anticipate that for the size of the use, more than likely Hurt and Profit feels like you'll end up with some type of pretreatment, commercial system.
All right, that was the two, just the two questions I want some clarification on. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Could I follow up? Electricity, you said it's single-phase. In a facility of this size, I'm not sure a single-phase would be adequate, would it?
You're right, single-phase wouldn't be. Because number one, you know, your air conditioning and your equip, you know, mechanical equipment is gonna require, you know, three-phase, or should, you know, for the size of the units, we're probably talking three-phase. So yes, you would have to make, you know, some adjustments with that. I'm just saying, single-phase is on the site. But to bring in three-phase, you would have to work with the, you know, the electric company and, and bring that on-site.
And there's a cost involved.
That's a cost, right.
Okay.
Yeah, but it's, you know, obviously, that's done all the time.
Yeah.
But yeah. But no, all that's coming into the site is single-phase. And that was, you know, mostly for the, the house.
Thank you. Let's talk.
My question is not so much to this, but it's more of a philosophical question. And I can only speak for District Two in Amherst County. But I can tell you, in talking, in the ag community, in the farming community, on Amherst side, there's a great deal of support for this concept, whether it's on this piece of land, or maybe it's somewhere else, and I don't know where that's somewhere else today. But the community support, I think, is strong. How do you all feel it is in Nelson County?
Perfectly honest, I would say that one out of ten supports.
One out of ten?
One out of ten. They've talked to me about it. I haven't really solicited. But you have experienced it, you know?
Yeah. My experience is that universally, you know, the, the community wants to support agriculture. Universally, and there's no question about that. We're going through a comprehensive plan now, and this is something that's kind of been on the table for two years. So there's been, you know, there's been, you know, limited discussion about it. During that time, there hasn't been, in my experience, outside of the principal people in Nelson County that have brought this to us, outside of them, I haven't heard any support for this. We've, in the comprehensive plan study that we've been doing, we've talked about capital planning, we've talked about investments, we've talked about priorities for the county. And since this is on the table for two years, you would expect that this is something that some people would have raised, saying this is something that we should be looking at. I did a search of all the documents that we have in the comp plan so far, and there's not one hit on agricultural center, not one mention of it. And this is data that was put together by our, you know, by our, by the Berkeley group that's doing the heavy lifting for our comprehensive plan. So my honest evaluation, as honest as I can be, is that there, while I think there's, would be a real hesitancy for people to say, "We don't support it," because supporting the ag committee is some, I mean, the ag industry and community in the county, it's huge for us. I haven't heard from anybody that this is a priority that we either have or should
My experience has been pretty much the opposite of Mr. Barton's. I've had maybe one out of ten who do not support the concept. I've been an open supporter of the, the project, and I've had quite a few people reach out to me with concerns. And anybody who's come to me and shared their concerns, when I was able to explain what their concern was and what the reality of the project is. Because there's a lot of misconceptions, misconceptions, a lot of misinformation that's been going around about the project. And so when I've talked to some of those people that are concerned about it, once they learn, "Oh, I thought it was this, and, and here's what the real plan is," they support the project. So I might have one in ten who still say, "No, they're not interested in it." But that's in the West District and people that have come to me. So I wonder what your experience has been?
I got you. Thanks, Brian. No, just kidding. You know, I think when we, we probably should let Mr. Bryant come up at some point, because he's, before we continue comments, can we let Mr. Bryant talk?
Yeah. Oh, any more questions for Mr. Smith?
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
You want me to turn this off or leave it?
Mr. Bryant?
Sorry.
Now, I have to compliment Amherst on the size of candy bars that y'all give out. We save ours over from trick-or-treating.
First of all, I want to thank everybody for showing up today and even considering sitting down to discuss the possibility of a joint project of this size. A couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, you've heard some of the possibilities of the use of this space. And I'd like to be very clear about what the primary focus of the project, and dispel some of the misinformation that has been circulating about it. Why are we even pursuing the purchase of this piece of property? First and most important is to develop a facility that is centrally located for the purpose of providing technical education for both high school students and adults. These programs will provide skilled training for local jobs. Developing a skilled workforce will attract more business to the areas. There is support from both high schools, as well as both community colleges, for this program. Second is to develop an ag center that is large enough to accommodate crowds for large events, like regional fairs, rodeos, livestock shows, sales, and other events, in addition to the primary use as an education center. What kind of technical education would we offer here? Well, that depends on what the local businesses need, like CDL training was discussed. Maybe it's a brewmaster, maybe it's HVAC, maybe it's welding machine, it's auto mechanics, equipment mechanics, equipment operators, EMT training, just to name a few. Certifications needed to practice in these areas will be earned during the process. Some ask, "Don't we all already offer this type of training at the high schools?" Yes and no. This is a program that requires application and acceptance, and may require prerequisites before acceptance. Because all students will be engaged, this will allow more focused, intensive, detailed training. Also, the public schools have significant risk management rules, which prohibit students from being able to work with some of the tools necessary for the training in this locality. Why this location, a lot of us ask? The proposed property is almost exactly equal distance between each high school. It is conveniently located to a major highway, and is visible from the road, and offers plenty of room for growth. Another question a lot of us have is, why are we advocating that both counties be included in this project? Well, both counties need a skilled workforce. Both counties want to provide opportunities for residents to acquire job skills and find careers close to home, support future generations, and keep the communities growing. We all ask, "Why is everybody going off to college and then never come back to Nelson or Amherst County?" It's because we don't have a facility to provide the skill sets for the jobs that are needed here. You've heard about this price tag of fifty-three million dollars. So who's going to pay for it and how? With a business venture of this size, you have to crawl before you walk and walk before you run. They were simply asked to purchase a property and develop a working group that was represented from both counties, who would work with the county grant writers to solicit funding to develop the infrastructure. There's money available from the federal and state governments to help fund this project. Because the two counties are in different districts, there are even more funds available for the infrastructure. There are private companies that may be interested in sponsoring the project as well. The Vietnam War Museum, currently located in Arrington, may be interested in relocating to this site, which would open up more opportunity for funding, as well as bringing outside visitors and interests. There are concerns about Nelson County spending taxpayer dollars in another county. It was made clear early on that the residents of both counties would have equal access to the benefits of this project. There are some details that would need to be worked out as the project moves forward, but there were no plans to have one county unfairly advantaged over the other. Finding an appropriate piece of property that is located between both counties is impossible. If we hope to attract businesses to the counties, we need to be thinking proactively about providing a workforce for those businesses. I grew up in Rosen, graduated from Nelson County High School, and have lived in Nelson for the most of my life. I have operated a business in Amherst County for over twenty-five years. I have known many, many people from both counties, and have had conversations with many, many people from both counties. I am certain that most of the people in both counties have many of the same priorities, which include providing for their families, making an honest living at a job that can be, they can be proud of, and contribute to the future of the community as well. There is currently an opportunity available for us to provide that for the residents of both counties. Let's try to move forward together with this project. Thanks again for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Are there any questions for me that?
Sure, I, if I may. So it sounded like the Old Dominion complex was eighteen acres?
Right.
We're talking about two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred acres? I mean, I guess what I'm interested in, I, I support the ag community, I understand the need, but what is the need compared to, like, the grandiose pie in the sky? I mean, if they're doing it with eighteen acres, and we're looking at three-hundred-and-fifty acre, or three-hundred acres, I mean, what if this, and we're talking about fifty-five, fifty-three million dollars, I mean, what is the absolute need?
We understand that the additional acres would be used to teach, like having a working farm on-site for both high schools, as well as adult education. Some of the things that were discussed that could possibly be part of this was a, a large animal vet facility that would also use a cattle working facility to teach animal science and have an area large enough for the high schools to, to operate a working farm as well. Whether they need two-hundred-and-fifty-some acres to do that, maybe not.
So, I mean, are they doing those things at the Old Dominion?
No, they do not have the room for that at Old Dominion.
Fair enough.
And Mr. Chairman, they in, in Pennsylvania County, they do not have their VOTEC school on their site. It's in two different places, because the eighteen acres, they actually found one of their old schools. So it's probably, what, eight, ten miles between the two, where they've got their VOTEC facility and the ag facility. So they don't have everything on one site.
Sure, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Bryant?
So the fifty-three, fifty-four million dollars, so that's basically, you're looking for twenty-seven million dollars from each county? Is that what you're saying?
No. We, we were asking both counties to move forward with the purchase of the property if there was adequate water and sewer. The working group, who is a board appointed from the Board of Supervisors to work as a working group from both counties, that would be equally represented, to go out and work with the grant writers and solicit the funding for the infrastructure. So there was, at no time, any thought of going to the counties and ask for the counties for a fifty-three million dollar funding on this project. It was just a funding for the purchase of the property, and the working group would solicit the funding for the infrastructure.
That's good to know. I'm just gonna, I'll tell you straight up, Mr. Bryant, my gut reaction, and I, you know, we kind of talked about not making this site specific, I think where we ought to be, boards, is, does it make sense for us to collaborate, partner on a complex? To me, if we have to talk about this site, the big issue I have with it is water and sewer. Why would you invest that amount of money in a property that has wells on it? From being a planner, it doesn't make sense to me. So while I fully support doing something with this type of facility, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's the property to do it on. I mean, our water stops somewhere around, you know, the town of Amherst, I think it all stops down at, was it the medical, what's that medical place?
Blue Ridge.
Blue Ridge. Is that where your water?
That's where most of it is. Small, isolated place.
So, yeah. I think what's important for us today is say, "Hey, does it make for us to sense to continue conversations on, you know, looking at this, this type of facility, not necessarily debate this site or not?" That's where I'm at.
So I kind of want to add, and I know I, I don't have any other questions, Mr. Bryant, I don't want to stand up.
Does anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
We have, and of course, Mark and I have had discussion about what it is that we need to be thinking about as the counties, you know, what the issues look ahead. And though, I think when we look at the ag facility specifically, that talks about a lot of good things that are important to our communities respectively. You know, and understanding the site specifically is, you know, whatever that discussion is, and of course, has been modified as of late, and so we, that would also be a consideration. One thing I do know, and that is career technical education is, that's such a dire need for our student and adult populations, that I, it turns out, counties can't do it on their own. One of the heartfelt experiences I've got to see in Nelson is economies of scale. Though we got a lot of folks who want to be, become welders and plumbers and contractors and all that, it's hard to attract industries to our respective areas if we ain't produced a certain number of them. And combining forces is a very big piece of that, I believe, to answering some of that. One big industry that just, that we have now is fiber internet. You know, they need splicers, we need linesman, they need all sorts of those, oh, those occupations. How's it that we can field them? And I don't see any other way that we can do that without a relationship with Amherst and what that looks like, and how to accomplish that. You know, and I can understand the concerns of water and sewer, that, that was something that we were concerned with as well. Where specifically, you know, it certainly could be up there. We bought three-hundred acres around our high school, of course, as well. You know, now, that might not necessarily be the, the site distance that everyone's looking for, but, you know, if we're looking at some of those options, they do exist. And that's not to say I have ruled out this property entirely, you know, I have not. But I do think that we need that relationship to work on the future of workforce. And I don't, I don't think that's anything we're going to disagree on there. Question is, how? What does that look like? You know, is it in a fifty-three million dollar bite, or is it in a five-to-ten million dollar bite? You know, it's a lot easier to split that bite than it is a couple others. I do know, and I do agree with what Mr. Bryant said as relates to funding, the governor, Governor Youngkin has mentioned countless times, site readiness projects. And that can look like so many different things that come with certain certifications that can attract a business, that would even be made available to local municipalities that want to provide certain services. I, for one, think that that opportunity could exist, whether that's on this property, another property, whatever that could look like. Go Virginia is another one of those opportunities. We're two entirely different regions. The pot of money goes from just being a couple million dollars to ten to twenty million dollars. So the money can exist. The question is, is what is, is that we want? What do we see as being the future? And what that site location can look like? So.
Board members' thoughts?
Yeah, from a, from a business perspective, and not only this project, but other projects, it makes so much sense for us to partner together when it comes to getting grants and things of that nature. We're much stronger standing as two as we, than we are individually as one.
No doubt.
Mr. Ayers, anything?
I can say the proof's in the pudding. Through my years, when it was a multi-agency grant to buy equipment or whatever it was, it was much stronger when it was a unified effort with multiple agencies to obtain federal and state funds. And that's, that's what I see sitting here at the table today with you folks. Assista County, Nelson is... Assista County, Nelson, is what can we do to create a better environment for both our communities? We're both still predominantly rural, and we've got a lot of trades that are needed. As Jeff spoke of with the young folks, I know with where I work now, we fight tooth and nail trying to find plumbers, electricians, carpentry, you name it, it's, it's getting, it's hard. I mean, it's beyond hard to try to find the commitment of people and those that have the talents and certifications to do what needs to be done. I mean, I feel a VOTAC educational center and somewhere in our region here would, would benefit us greatly and open the doors for jurisdictions around us to, to participate in that as well. Whether that, you know, a lot of places have a certain amount of slots for other jurisdictions to pay to come to a VOTAC academy or school to get, get training, so, you know. And again, is it this site, or is it somewhere else? I'm open to that, you know. But I think it would would be very beneficial to both of our, our counties if we could partner to come up with a location and, and look at a VOTAC slash ag center that we could both share and take care of both of our communities.
Mr. Wade, any thoughts?
I think Jimmy summed it up pretty good, him and Mr. Martin, you know, working to find the right location is probably what we need to do, maybe listen to do the price tag, or not, it comes along with the lack of sewer, lack of water. I do see it in both of our counties' interests to continue working to find the right location.
Mr. Pugh?
Yeah, you know, there was a question asked earlier to gain support from members of your community or so forth, it was asked. I'll be honest with you, there's not been a lot of support to this, come from the people in my constituency. You know, when they heard about the price tag and the lack of water, sewer, I, I don't think, I'd say, I don't think this is the right spot to do this. As far as vocational training, you know, that, that can take many avenues. Does that, does that mean the county needs to look at more partnerships with CBCC, or is it with Nelson County? I, I don't think it's just one area fits all, it could be also working with the local businesses to see what is needed. I mean, I don't even think we have that answer. Another thing that we don't talk about a lot is, is general work ethic. I mean, things like plumbing, electricians, you know, it's a lot of work too, and you've got to be physically able and active, and, you know, a lot of people don't like that type of work, and we, we need to be able to find a way to get people more interested in doing that work. And I don't know what that is, and maybe through pay. Maybe that's what it, what it needs to be, maybe those guys need to make more money, and more people will look at doing those jobs. You know, we have been taught this line that you have to go to college, and you need to spend four years in college, and you get out with a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollars worth of debt, and you can't find a decent job to pay off. Maybe vocational training with higher pay would help alleviate some of those, those problems, but I don't feel that this is the correct spot for something of this nature. I don't think we need two-hundred-and-fifty acres on that large scale. But I think the conversation's good. I think it, overall, it's great to have you all here and discuss things that we can collaborate on. So, I do appreciate that.
So, one of the things that, you know, as we kind of contemplate these goals and ambitions, you know, I kind of want to emphasize some interesting data that we got from our comp plan recently, and that's, we have forty-eight-hundred Nelsonians leave work every day to go work in other jurisdictions. About sixteen-hundred Nelsonians live and work in Nelson County. But a really tough number that we just got was knowing that near twenty-one-hundred people drive into Nelson County to work Nelson County jobs. And when we talk about wage, I think there's a piece of that. Nelson's not a cheap place to live, and we also have a very rich history of scalping Amherst government employees and bringing them to Nelson County, as you guys might have experienced in the last five centuries.
All's fair in love and war.
So, you know, how it is that we can look at that, the workforce needs of our areas, I think that it is critical. We don't have much in common as we look north and trying to figure out economies of scale with those folks, because they'll just look to their urban center of Charlottesville. We can't really look across the river, because Buckingham's so far away, and crossing Augusta is pretty serious feat going over and up and down that mountain. So, Amherst, here you are, and we've always considered y'all good neighbors. What do we want to do?
Well, I obviously cannot speak for your board, but what I'm hearing from our board is that there's consensus that more VOTAC agricultural training is needed, it's important, it makes sense for us to collaborate with Nelson to do that. What I would suggest is we get the correct players together, and, which would be our administrators, probably our schools, maybe CBCC, the ag people, and talk about what the facility actually might need to look like, right? I, I kind of think this site kind of went beyond, I mean, we're talking about RV campgrounds and all, whatever. Let them talk about what a program might look like, and then we kind of say, okay, yeah, this makes sense, we could make it work through grant funding, whatever, and then talk about where we might put it. You know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, quite honestly, when I was looking at it like a fairground, I'm like, why in the heck would Nelson County want to pay into a fairground for Amherst County, right? That doesn't make sense.
It'd be a regional fairground.
Okay, whatever, but, it could be. But that kind of goes beyond the root need, which is an ag and VOTAC training, right? So, I would suggest we get the schools together, our administrators, whatever staff they think is appropriate, and let them vet it out some more before we go talking about site specifics and all that. That's just my humble opinion. Throw that out there.
Mr. Chairman, and haven't those conversations already happened on the Amherst side? Weren't the schools pulled in early on?
Maybe they were, but I think unless the Nelson side and the Amherst schools are talking to each other.
I don't know if the Nelson side is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you've got to have everybody talking to each other. It can't get so big, but if you don't have both parties in the room talking about their needs, I have no idea what the school in Amherst County has to do with it. I don't know what Nelson County has to do with it. I think, I think, Mr. Ayers, one of you guys talked about the important talk to the businesses, is that what they do? Right? Somebody said that, I think that's, but I think actually, working out some more details before we get talking about buying a site.
And I think when that group is formed to talk, I think we need to remember the root of this whole project came from a group, Amherst Ag Committee, Nelson County Farm Bureau, other organizations that envisioned being the board that Mr. Bryant talked about. Because if we just add people that are county employees, then it makes it look like this project is a, is a county project when truly it's a separate entity that's going to be freestanding with county representation. So when that committee is formed, it needs to have people from that side too, not just county.
Absolutely. I, I don't know who all the players are. I just like identify them.
And then another thing, when that committee, if, if we find another piece of land, the kiss of death to this point in this project has been, I don't know, was anybody at this table at the think tank session at Amherst Middle School? Okay, so I think, okay, so very few of us were at that meeting. And what started out as a pie in the sky, let's look at any possibility, we've got three-hundred acres, how can we use three-hundred acres? Cabins, motocross trails, all these crazy ideas people were just throwing up in this meeting, ended up getting put into a report and sent to the architect, and it became the rule of law for the goals of this project. And I was at the meeting, I know that wasn't the intent of all of those ideas, it was just, how could we, what could we do? And it became, we want fifty-three million dollars worth of infrastructure. And that was never the intent of the project. So you're right, there is a lot of, we, it got way in the weeds on, on different things, and so if we get to where we're looking at a piece of, of property, I say we don't do that again. We focus on, what's the, the backbone of the project?
Now, and I'm just going to throw this thought out there, because you're fifteen minutes from our high school, which ain't terrible, though that might be a little hard for folks in other side of Mass and Heights, but it'd be the same story if we'd have it in Afton, no matter what happened. We did recently procure three, near three-hundred acres or close to.
You got water and sewer?
We have water and sewer. We have water and sewer, and we do have access to a major highway. You know, though I'm not going to sit here and, you know, and I understand the proximity thing, and I understand that's a different place, I'm not going to sit here and discount that. We've already paid the introduction into it. And maybe there's something that could exist there in that VOTAC, and giving Amherst some preferential treatment and what that can look like. Water, sewer, twenty-nine, and we got, my goodness, high speed internet. Yeah, we have high-speed internet, we have the best internet in the region, no doubt. One day you'll get it.
We're talking going to night.
Yeah. You know, it's a little bit slower when they get it to Amherst, but I was told.
This land adjoins a high school?
This land adjoins, surrounds the high school. So.
That is something.
I'm just saying, this is a transaction that we've made, we've already put the, footed the bill. And if we can look at this, and we've already kind of maybe offset that intro and that piece, and we've already done some light geotech stuff on it already, and we're continuing to do so, this could be an opportunity. Though I get the proximity thing, that's why I ain't going to just sit here and die on the hill of it, because I understand the proximity of it, but you are only fifteen minutes from the town.
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't bother me much, proximity. We send kids to go to the government schools.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
I mean, yeah, I think that's a definite possibility, it's worth discussing further. I think finding out what the actual needs are versus wants probably the direction I would point this in.
Sure.
If your board agrees.
Yeah. All right. Mr. Reed?
I appreciate, Mr. Martin, your perspective and comments on this, and David's as well. Everybody truly resonated very much with yours. We have other priorities for capital investment in the county that have legs at this point. This project at this point juncture, my feeling is, it doesn't. For my experience with projects, never been involved in projects of this magnitude, but all projects that have a community resonance in effect, they tend to be successful when they kind of rise from needs and ideas within the community. You have a group of people that are working in that direction, and then it works up and then reaches us during that time, instead of starting at the top and kind of dropping down with it. And that's one of the reasons that I, one of many reasons, that I've really been not in favor of this project. Why anyone would say no to career and technical education, especially in educator life myself, it's just, you know, I've been, I spent, I spent years doing apprenticeships in community to, to build for, you know, my students, totally understand that. I also am really aware that when we had our agriculture and discussion working group, there's other things, and they're that bad on agriculture, pardon. One of the things that the, that came out of the community members that were connected with agriculture was that it's impossible to get into agriculture at any scale because of the costs.
Are you talking about during your comp plan?
Yeah, right, right. And these are from community people. And that was one of the things that came up really strong. How difficult that is. I don't want to make things more difficult than they already are, of course, but my experience with agriculture has really been on a community basis, it's not been on a broad basis. I've been involved in organic and sustainable community garden initiatives in Albemarle County before getting on the board here. And, you know, kind of made a study about that, it's been a long time since I grew a significant portion of the food that I consume. But I continue to be an active forester in my, my own personal property that I'm doing, so I kind of understand a lot of that. And and I talked to to a lot of the people that I know in my community that are small farmers, small scale, and.
I think we've got people that can hear, who can talk to them, right?
Is your mic on, Ernie?
They can hear.
No, it's not on.
Thank you. And and I've spoken to about ten people about the ag center, I went directly to these people, and they, you know, Little Hat Creek Farm, and Woodson's Mill, and Edible Landscaping, and Old Orchard Farm, and others, and other people that do all these things. And they have a model that they have, which has to do with cooperative work and and using community centers as a spot to support the agriculture community. And I don't want this to really be just a discussion about career and technical education, which is a huge need in and of itself. But it's easy for me to see how how y'all's community came to this conclusion. I mean, it's, I mean, you know, we have an enviable tourist impact on our county, which drives our county economically. And I certainly understand how important that would be to y'all, as well as all the other benefits that this might, might bring. But, from what y'all said about the desire to collaborate on career and technical education, I think that is a really important thing that we, you know, that we can and arguably should do. You know, it goes way beyond us in terms of, you know, how, how to do that, but again, working towards it is something that I, I think is, is a noble thing, and it would afford an opportunity, again, for us to get together, and.
Keep having these historic meetings.
Well, you know, it's, it's never a bad thing, you can't learn less by doing these things at all. And, and, you know, anything of, of community value is built through relationships. So, any relationships we can build are going to be valuable.
So, Mr. Reed, you would say you're generally supportive of doing this group concept? We just kind of talked about it with Mr. Martin.
I mean, pulling apart the career and technical ed, I would say yes. Given what brought us together today, probably not. No, I would say no, I would say definitely no.
So you're no against it?
You know, you, you, using, you know, taxpayer money in Nelson County to purchase property in Amherst County, just to put one thing on the table?
Well, that's not what we were asking.
I know, I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to be clear on whether I would support it or not, I think career and technical ed is certainly worth pursuing.
That's what we related towards.
Would you support Amherst County spending money in Nelson County to do such a thing?
You know, I'm not sure about that.
You, you wouldn't want us to spend our money?
I'm not, I, I don't have the deep knowledge of your community to understand the interactions of how that would build, so I really don't know, I can't really answer that question.
I've spent a lot of money in Nelson County.
And I'm grateful.
I've spent a whole lot of money in Nelson County.
Right, yeah.
And I would say, I support taking your money.
I know you do.
Yeah, yeah, and Hill Hardware is my, is, is where I invest in Amherst County, to tell you the truth.
All right, so we're getting to some kind of consensus real quick. Mr. Barton?
I answered, your question was a direct question, you asked me what I found out, and I, I answered truthfully what I think. But I think I've learned. out, and I, I answered truthfully what I think, um, but I, I think I've learned it's much more important to, to say why, um, you're for something or against something, and this thing, and, and, and working together with, with the community next to you, or your neighbor, or your family is, you know, it's really a, a really important thing, and, and I was really moved by what Mr. Pugh said, because oftentimes the discussion that has to do with, um, um, loo- looking for people to work doesn't have to do with money and wages, and in our society where we seem to value capital tremendously and the, we have enormously wealthy people, we're not really paying carpenters and, we, we try to pay carpenters a little wage as we can, and it, it's not, you know, and so we, we need to think about that, but cooperation, technical education is important, I, I, I really, one of the things I wished for was that Nelson and, and Amherst could cooperate on Wynton, because that was such an important resource for both of us, that was given to Amherst and you sold it, and, and, and that makes me somewhat suspicious of you. Part of the way I feel about this was that last spring, went down to Pennsylvania to see their complex and to talk to those people, and, 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 and what, one thing that I found out there was, they were not very much enthused about another facility similar to theirs being this close, because they were having a great deal of difficulty just making ends meet with their facility. And also, when they began, they were totally dependent upon the money that was made available through tobacco and, and, uh, industry and the kinds of things, and i- i- it was, without a doubt, you know, I, they were not really excited about us thinking about this thing. I, I am reluctant to spend money, Nelson money and Amherst facility, facility that exists there, I, we need to concentrate on making all sorts of educational and training opportunities available for all our young people, a- and that includes, you know, education, et cetera, but the, the, we have real needs in Nelson County, and, you know, Mr. Par is right, that, that, the price that was put on this initially, you know, it was unacceptable, but I would like to work with Amherst, I mean, you know, the Piney River Trail is, is wonderful, and that we can think of other things in which we can cooperate, maybe in the, this field of, um, of technical education. But, th- this, uh, project here is, is, I, I cannot support. And I hopefully, you know, that, you know...
So Skip's supportive of doing the group thing, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, meeting to talk about...
Yeah, I mean, I, but we have responsibilities to the people in our counties, you have responsibility, we have responsibilities, and, and, and that's primary, who, whose those responsibilities are too, now if we can find a way to work together, you know, of course, because, you know, you, you know, the possibility of something happening, you know, that, that, but for the reasons you talked about and the pe- people in Pennsylvania talked about, I don't think this is feasible.
So, she won your board?
No. Who's that clerk?
Oh, I had you, I like. Amanda would have gone to Sam.
That would be a good idea, to, you know...
Pulling out the hot seat, yeah. So, I, I, as I collectively hear what my board has to say, Mr. Par, I haven't gotten to you yet, did you wanna say anything?
I think I've said all of them.
I think we do have a general interest in doing, we have a consensus in continuing this discussion of what this could look like, I definitely would strongly encourage it to be two board members, um, that way, that discussion can kinda continue, and I, I, I do think there's o- open invitation to kinda look at some of the opportunities that exist between the borders, and of course, maybe some of the transactions we've already made. I think there is a huge opportunity, and I, it sounds like our board is generally supportive of that. Great.
Of cooperation?
Cooperate, yeah, there you go, makes sense. So, that's where we're at.
I just wanna throw out that, um, that, that I think we've really only scratched the surface on ways that we could work together to mutual benefit of both counties.
Absolutely.
And opening it up to other possibilities that might include, um, you know, other types of, you know, recreation development, things that would mutually benefit both counties, I think that would be worth expensive sweat equity on this one.
You know, and there's, you have places like Piney River where we have water and sewer infrastructure, you know, I don't know what y'all's vision is in the future, I mean, some that's going unused, some that is being used, we have a really large water main we put in for some reason, right, Ernie? And we gotta dump a lot of water accidentally, so, you know, that, that's something that we're definitely interested in, in continuing that discussion, you know, that could extend into other things, obviously, we have a mutual aid agreement as it relates to fire rescue, if I'm not mistaken, um, and that's been a very good thing, Piney River specifically has a rich history in having families living on both sides of that border, um, same thing in Gladstone, I mean, everyone talks about Gladstone, is it Amherst, is it Afton, is it Nelson? Don't know, you know, but they all get to claim a piece of that pie together, and that's a good thing, and we have some big ambitions, don't you skip down to Gladstone?
If you, if you people have been to Gladstone, there, there are real possibilities in Gladstone, I mean, the river is really beautiful there, and, you know, it's always been isolated, is, I was a teacher for forty years in Nelson County, and, and children felt so isolated down there, 'cause it took them so long to get to, to the high school, but the, that community is a community, and they, they're working towards doing some things that are really beneficial, you know?
Yeah, so, that's just an example, we have lots of neighboring places here that are really, and our building office, right Nate?
Absolutely.
All we do is work with you guys.
So, what I'm hearing is to let our administrators come, come up with a group that would include a member from each of the boards?
Two, for sure, two.
Yes. One from each board, two?
Yeah, we want two.
Two from each board, okay, and the, uh, all the other stakeholder groups and the best schools.
Sure, that sounds good.
Sure. Is that good with everybody? All right, well, I think this is the time where I get to put on the Nelson jacket, so we can...
Yeah, give it to them, David.
Absolutely.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn on Amherst? All favors say aye.
Skip, say something.
Come on.
No, I wanna stay here. I'll make a motion.
Really good water. Nelson. Second, all these friends I try.